I think we're live.
You are live.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to start by calling our second meeting of the Hampton Village Zone Board to order. TV has the agenda and you can call in both, obviously, the interested, any interested parties. The number will be at the bottom of the screen. First, we have to approve the minutes of April 24th, 2020. If there are no additions or corrections, I'd like a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have eight determinations. I'll read the name, address, and the resolution, after which Pam Bennett will hold the board. The complete application is in Village Hall if people would like to go and look at it. The first one, we have James D. Danella, 49 La Forest Lane. It's a request to reopen the hearing. Ms. Bennett?
Oh, you want to reopen then?
It's a request.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. McGurk? Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. Hillow?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we have the two that are doing it together is Zay One LLC, 19 Chauncey Close. And it's on to determination will be
I, 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 Lusha Liz, I can't hear you.
Yeah, please repeat.
Ah, Zay One LLC and Zon Two LLC, 19 and 23 Chauncey Close. The determination will be issued June 12th. Okay?
So we're delaying the determination?
Right. I just haven't written it yet.
Not ready.
Okay, okay, I understand it. Thanks.
Portugal LLC, 283 Georgia Road. The disposition of the application was approved.
Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillow?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Minardi?
Yes.
And next, we have 34 Darby LLC. That's at 34 Darby Lane. And the disposition of the application was
Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillow?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Minardi?
Yes.
Next is 39 Hunting Lane LLC. At 49 Hunting Lane, the disposition of the application was
Ms. Marigold? Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillow?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Minardi?
Yes.
Then we have the David Andrew Trust Revocable Trust, 27 Windmill Lane. It will be approved and a letter will be sent to the applicant.
Do you know, you want me to poll? You don't need to. Okay.
And Contact Acquisition Corporation, 291 Montauk Highway. The disposition of the application was approved.
Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Hillow?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Minardi?
Yes.
We have one withdrawal of an application. That's Nicole and Alan Salmasi at 73 David's Lane. Do I have a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Big motion.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have a request for an adjournment. Care of the Maidstone Premises Lexington Lounge LLC, 207 Main Street. They're requesting an adjournment until June 12th, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Motion.
Second.
And second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we go to the new hearings. The first one is the application of John and Cecilia Ford at 90 Pantico Road.
Application of John and Cecilia Ford, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 3014724.1 for an area variance from Chapter 278 zoning to legalize coverage. A 260 square foot variance is required from Section 278 3A9 to legalize 3,931 square feet of coverage, where 3,671 square feet of coverage is legally pre-existing pursuant to a prior zoning board approval. The maximum permitted coverage pursuant to zoning is 2,970 square feet. The subject property is 12,351 square feet in size and is located at 90 Pantico Road in Residence District R20 and the Hook Historic District. This project is classified as a type-two ordnance, a type-two action in accordance with SEQA.
Present?
Uh, we have a one applicant on the line. I will unmute them right now. Applicant, you are on the air. Hello, you are on the air. I'm currently not hearing anything from them. Uh, let's just see if, uh, they start to talk.
This is, this is Len, this is Len Ackerman. I'm just on the call waiting for my hearing at 117 Lily Pond Lane. And you can mute me and just call me when you're ready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ackerman. That was the only person on the line.
All right, well, we can go to the next one, the application Aberdeen LLC, 29 Hunting
Application of Aberdeen Shear LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301385 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to legalize coverage, walkways, and patios. A 660 square foot variance is required from Section 278 3A9A to legalize 7,058 square feet of coverage, where 6,398 square feet is maximum permitted coverage. A five-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3A5B to legalize a patio located approximately 10 feet from the rear yard lot line, where the required setback is 15 feet. The subject property is 29,492 square feet in size and is located at 29 Hunting Lane in Residence District R40 and the Hunting Lane Historic District. This project is classified as a type-two action in accordance with SEQA.
Is the applicant present?
We have two additional callers right now. I am going to unmute them both accordingly to see.
Hi, this is Cecilia Ford.
And the applicant you are calling for?
Hi, Cecilia Ford here of the John and Cecilia Ford at 90 Pantico Road.
Oh, okay, we'll come back to that. Um, we didn't have you on the initial call and let me
Yeah, I couldn't get through. Um, so I should just stay on the phone?
Yes, please. We have one more applicant. Applicant, you are on the line.
Uh, John Tarbit here.
John, would you like to tell us about it?
Sure, thank you. Um, so, sorry, I'm just trying to get myself set up technology-wise. Um, so I can see you guys, but I have you muted, so I'll just, I'll just, I guess I'll, yeah, I guess I'll hear you through the phone. Um, so this is the property that my, my, actually, my dad actually redid probably 12 years ago now. It was, it was the old, um, uh, old age home and, um, he did a historic renovation there, has lived there on and off the last 12 years, and has now sold it. As part of the CO process, we came upon a couple of things. One is the postman's walk from Hunting Lane to the house is just a little bit wider than 48 inches, so that can't count as a postman's walk and would need a variance. If you've been to the property, and it's understandable if you haven't been under the current conditions, but if you, if you have been to the property, it's a real nice postman's walk. It's very historic-looking. And it's in cement, so to, to cut it back to 48 inches, um, would be, it would destroy the look of it. Um, and it's only a little bit bigger than that. And there's a couple other brick walkways that have been added, um, just around the property. One thing to keep in note is that before we, um, before my dad renovated this property, the, the old age home had basically paved the entire, if you're looking at the property from Hunting Lane, they had, it was all driveway, I guess you would call it, but it was, it was essentially pavement on the entire, from the house to the property line and the entire left-hand side of the property. So all that was, um, ripped out and put to grass. Uh, so in, in a way, it's a, it's a lot better than it was, um, actually in all ways. But, uh, we are looking for a variance to try to keep these walkways, just because they really allow you to just get from, from, um, either the deck to the, to the, to the basement or from the, or from the driveway to the house without walking through grass or mud or, or what may be during different times of the year, snow. Um, and they're pretty small variances, so we were hoping the board would look favorably on the application.
Liz, I have no issues with it at all. I mean, they've done a great job over there at, at Hunting, I think.
All right, are you using the garage as a garage?
Uh, the garage has always been a garage. Uh, yeah, the garage has, um, during the time, during the last 12 years, it's just been a garage. There's nothing in there. It's, it's completely empty right now. Uh, there is actually, I should take that back. There is a pool house in about, I guess it's less than 200 square feet that's, that's part of the garage structure that faces the pool, but that's all, it's all legal. Um, and then there, there's a bathroom in there.
Okay.
And there's a second story in the garage, which is, which is, uh, just, it's always been storage.
That's a carriage house?
It was.
It is. It was originally, I believe it was originally a carriage house, you know, 100 years ago or so.
Yeah, well, it's, it's really, I think it's a very attractive property and especially the garage in the second floor.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, they really tried to, they really tried to do something nice there.
Uh, Ray, have you seen it?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this.
Okay, and Larry?
I'm muted.
He's muted, unmuted.
Larry, do you have a problem or a comment?
It's, I'm almost happy it's sold. It was a long time, and I think it was fixed up very nicely and I'm okay with it.
Okay, um, well, I guess
And on from the public?
Yeah, the public.
One moment, we'll unmute accordingly. The only other people on the line are applicants.
Okay. So, uh, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we will go back to the John and Cecilia Ford on 90 Pantico Road. And you're from the
I am muting them now.
Hello?
You are, you are on the air.
This is John. Hi, this is John Ford. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
You can hear me.
Hi. Um, I think you've been down to see, uh, what we're talking about here. Um, we would like to keep our existing brick the way it is, um, since I built the garage.
Can you speak louder, please?
Um, sure. Uh, we'd like to keep the, the brick the way it is. I think you've, several of you have been down to see the property. I built the garage. Our original intent was to take out the brick walk on the right-hand side, um, and some from in front of the garage and to enlarge some on the terrace itself also, uh, to make up for the additional coverage that the garage, uh, entailed. But once, once I had it up, uh, it seemed appropriate to try to get an easement from you guys if you could grant us a, let us keep the brick the way it is. We've, uh, we've actually put a considerable lot more greenery on the property than was here when we initially moved in. There was a great big circular driveway. And that's all gone and been replaced by lawn. Um, so, um, the garage really, I, I think compared to the original footprint, it's probably not much, not much more, if anything, uh, in terms of coverage. I know driveway doesn't actually count, but, uh, that's sort of, uh, that's my excuse to say that.
Great, you
Well, I, I've been to the property, and I wanted to get back again, but I did not. Uh, my impression is that the brick surrounding the, uh, pool is overkill, and you've lost most of the backyard.
I agree with you, and I think, uh, 32% is excessive coverage, which is 9% more than what was previously approved.
Um, Ray?
The garage was built, wait, not in the backyard.
Well, it is in the historic
I couldn't hear you there.
Uh, well, the garage was put up in the driveway, not in the backyard.
Talking about the brick around the pool.
Right, but that's, that's not relevant to the garage space, is it?
I'm not talking about
We're talking about the total coverage.
The garage counts as We've been very hard on other places, on, on Buell Lane or Mill Hill, where we make, we've asked people to take out, I don't know, uh, showers and eight, walkways and all kinds of, of other things. And this is in the historic district. And you were granted first a, a pool and then a, a garage, and the garage was with the promise that you were going to take some of the coverage away. Now you've got a garage in, and you're saying, oh, yeah, we don't really want to take it away. Well, you know, I mean, it's natural, but it's
I said in the applicant I realized it sounded inappropriate. I, I, I realize that we look like we're coming in late to try to, try to do this. And that was never my intent. We had originally drawn it up with a, with removed brick. Um, it was just our hope that you would grant us a little additional easement. Considering that a considerable portion of the garage, it's a much smaller structure than, than we'd originally asked to put up. And mo, a large part of it is over-existing pavement, so it actually hasn't affected the amount of coverage to a great extent. And I'm just asking if we could be granted relief on the rest.
Everything, it's historic district, and you have a car parked in the front lawn, which doesn't, looks great. I thought that was the reason for the
We don't park in the front yard unless we're trying to unload something directly into the house because of the COVID situation. We never park in front.
Yeah, we have some relatives staying with us right now, as I do too, and, um, we share the driveway with our back neighbor, who, for obvious reasons, does not like to be blocked, so we have an extra car here at the moment. Um,
But we, it's seldom, very seldom parked in the front yard. Um, that's really only if we're unloading groceries or something.
Is that a van?
We
Pardon me?
Is that a van that you park there?
No, I don't think so. John?
Well, let's, I think we should, yeah, I think they need to lose some, lose some of the, uh, bricks in the backyard. I mean, it's, it's too much of a variance, so. We did grant the variance a few years back, so, I mean, if, if they want to come back to us and take some out, take it all out, I don't know what you all want to do, but they got to lose some of it.
I, I agree.
That seems like a consensus. Um, would you like to have us keep the meeting open, adjourn it, and you can come back with some suggestions of what you're going to do, or how would you like to deal with it, the Ford?
Well, could you give us some idea of how much, in terms of square feet, you would actually like to have come out?
Well, I guess, take it back to the 3671.
And it'll, yeah, 3671.
I agree.
And we can do that from any property? Can we do that from, from like, we take out the postman's walk? I mean, the brick around the pool is symmetrical.
Well, it was counted in the original coverage, yes. It was counted in the lot coverage.
The brick around the pool is very symmetrical and very attractive. I don't know if anybody's seen it, but it's, um, it's, we're going to have to make it asymmetrical.
I mean, the postman's walk was
I think it should be your decision.
We, yeah, we don't want to design it for you. You figure out where you want to lose the, uh, the square, the square footage. Okay. What coverage?
I just, I'm saying, another thing to consider is that when the property was surveyed, the postman's walk was counted as part of our lot coverage, and it should not have been counted. It's 48 inches wide. So there's that also to consider.
Wait a minute, why shouldn't it be covered, counted?
It, it should not be counted.
Shouldn't it be part of the coverage?
It shouldn't be counted as coverage, but it was.
It should be part of the coverage.
Well, I
It should, even though it's
Maybe, maybe you should, yeah, let's adjourn it. Maybe he should talk to Billy.
Oh, that's fine.
Wait, I think you're allowed
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go here. What's, what's counted, what's, what's included, what's not included. I think we're, you know.
Um, all right, I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pardon me, Ms. Marigold, your audio is coming in rather faint. Uh, do you have a pair of headphones or something that you're working with?
I have, it's on.
Okay. I can, I can barely hear you when you're talking. It's, uh, it's fading in and out a little bit once in a while. You can unplug them, see what happens then.
I unplugged it.
All right, much better. Thank you very much.
All right, we're, we're going on to, um, Brian Francis Watson and
Pardon me, please repeat. Uh, we're, we're fading your audio out again and, uh, and, uh,
A background noise from other, from other sources.
Yes, yes, very much. I'm muting other sources.
Brian Francis Watson and Edwina Brooklyn Meister, 10 Jones Cove Road. Is the
Application of Brian Francis Watson and Edwina Brooklyn Meister, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301747 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning, legalize coverage in a patio. A 740 square foot variance is required from Section 278 3A9A to legalize 15,240 square feet of coverage, where 14,500 square feet is maximum permitted coverage. A 16-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3A5A to legalize a patio located approximately 59 feet from the front yard line, where the required setback is 75 feet and any other relief necessary. The subject property is 80,000 square feet in size and is located at 10 Jones Cove Road in Residence District R160. This project is classified as a type-two action in accordance with SEQA.
Is the applicant present? Is it John Tarbit?
Hi, it's John Tarbit. Can you hear me?
You can.
Hello? Okay, great.
You're here, John.
Uh, so, thank you. So just so everybody knows, the, uh, when you're watching it on LTV, there's a delay, so, uh, if you're trying to watch it and speak as an applicant, you're actually, you're actually seeing 20 seconds ago on the screen, so it's a little, it's a little discombobulating, but, uh, so I'm, I'm not going to look at the screen. I'll just talk into the phone.
Yes, please do that. Focus on the audio.
Yep, work off the audio from the phone. Uh, so this is an interesting application in the sense that, um, it's, it's for sale also, and uh, when the seller came to me, we decided to go get an updated CO to, um, to try to prepare the property for sale. And we used Dave Saskus' little surveyor, and he came up with a coverage number that didn't match the coverage that had been, uh, shown on the prior surveyor. So luckily, the, the numbers are only a few hundred square feet apart, but the prior surveyor had said that the property was, uh, at the maximum allowable coverage. And using the exact same structures, uh, and Dave, Dave Saskus found that it was a couple hundred square feet larger than what was shown in the previous survey. So we're here asking for a variance partly to, to legalize what was already CO'd years ago, uh, just using a couple hundred square feet in more coverage. Uh, and it was just due to, I guess, the surveyor's calculating coverage in different ways. Uh, and then as part of that process, we uncovered the fact that the owner had added two, uh, very small stone areas, which were, like, one was 100 square feet and one was 200 square feet. Uh, all of these things together combined add up to the property being just less than 5% over on coverage. But the two patio, I, I'm calling them patios, but they're, they're tiny. Uh, one is for a, um, he, he put some stones underneath a grill, uh, and the other is over by the tennis court area. You'll see a couple stones there as well. They, they can't be seen from the street. They're, they're tiny. They've been there for years. And, uh, we're, we're hopeful that the board sees them as the minimus and, and has no problem granting those variances as well.
Ray?
I, I, I don't have a problem with this. It's, it's, it's minimal.
Okay, uh, Ray? Ray?
Yes.
Uh, John?
I'm good.
Larry?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think we have to make it clear that this is a much bigger property, so obviously the percentage is much less than the previous one we discussed. And, um, it's, you know, you don't, you don't see that, and it's a lot of green, a lot of trees, a lot of grass and everything, so I think we're fine with it. Do I have a motion to close?
Does anybody else want to speak on the application?
You can
We currently have no other callers on the line except for Mr. Ackerman, who is waiting for Lily Pond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to a motion to close.
Big motion.
Second?
Aye.
Last We have
Thanks, guys.
117 Lily Pond Lane LLC and 117 Lily Pond Lane. Ms. Bennett?
Mm-hmm. Application of 117 Lily Pond Lane LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 30113124.3 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to make alterations to a pre-existing non-conforming residence and construct the seller stairway, stairwell. A 19.3-foot variance is required from Section 78 3A4A to make alterations to a legally pre-existing residence that is located 14.7 feet from the side yard lot line, where the required side yard setback is 34 feet. An 11.1-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3A4B and 278 3A5B to construct the seller stairway, 8.9 feet from the side yard lot line, where the required setback is 20 feet. The subject property is 60,144 square feet in size and is located at 117 Lily Pond Lane in Residence District R160. This project is classified as a type-two action in accordance with SEQA.
Is the applicant present, Sir Ackerman?
Yes, good morning. Uh, the, uh, the property here under consideration is a, the carriage house of a very lovely older home on Lily Pond Lane. And as part of the restoration of this property and the, um, renovation expansion, uh, they're requesting, um, a minimum cellar variance for a stairway to serve the mechanicals. I've asked the client to speak to his neighbor to the west, whom he personally is familiar with, and that neighbor has voiced no objections to the application. So I, I think based upon the fact that this is
So I, I think based upon the fact that this is just merely a stairway, um, with, you know, serving just the mechanical room in the basement, I think it's a reasonable, sensible application and, uh, respectfully would ask for you to issue the variance.
Oh, it's a beautiful piece of property and, um, a charming, um, guest house. And when it was subdivided, the Bruckman property, uh, the guest house was allowed to be closer to the side lot than it would have been. Um, so this new owner is obviously going to take advantage of that and also restore what was a quite charming English cottage. Um, I'm glad to see that there are a opening for, um, between the house and the garage so that it won't seem like a long continuous house from one end to the other. So that was very, uh, well thought out, I, I believe. Um, I, I don't have a problem with it.
I have no wish, I have no issues.
No.
No.
I was very glad to see that the older part of the place is going to stay, because it's beautiful.
Beautiful. Um, is there anybody on the line that would like to be heard on this?
Aside from Mr. Ackerman, we have no additional callers.
Okay, so, um-
All right, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, close the hearing, motion?
Make a motion.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I-
Aye.
And then we have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, good job.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye. Bye.